I'm gonna call meeting order on Monday, September 23rd, 2024 at like 6:02. 6:03. Are there any adjustments to the select board agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is to approve the minutes from the September 9th meeting. It's the board's pleasure.
I make a motion that we approve them.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 You can take that over there and we can sign. Give one copy to Lizzie.
Thank you.
So she has like a little colored chip of paper. Oh, it's August 9, 23.
Alright, um, the next item is public comment, and it's for any items that are not on the agenda. Folks who'd like to speak during public comment time, please state your name and make your comment.
I'm Alex.
Alright. Okay.
They're all on the agenda.
Fair enough. Sounds like there's nothing to be added. We'll move on to Robin's Town Clerk report.
I have had the new law put on the door of the office, so you will all have to stop in and get new keys. We will be open tomorrow night, 6 to 8, if that's convenient for you. And I did a deposit for Brandy today for just under $49,000.
Wow.
Yep.
That's all the taxes that have come in since she left?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yep. And I mailed out four overseas ballots today for the election.
Oh.
Two went to Chile, two went to Canada.
Chile. Okay.
And I got a message from Sid, the Cabot Road Foreman. Their side of Judd Brook is gonna be closed down for covert repair. And it's right now estimated from October 7th through the end of November.
Wow.
Yep.
Completely shut the road down.
Completely shut the road down.
So that's from like the top of East Hill down to the other side? Is that where Judd Brook starts?
No, no, Judd Brook doesn't start until you go down past Thompson's.
Right, but yeah, but.
The same road as the way tunnels jump out.
When you start going down the hill there, yeah, okay, yeah.
So that's from October?
He said around October 7th through the end of November.
Wow.
And I will have something put on front porch form and the website. And I am going to send letters to each one of the residents that live on that road to let them know that it's closed.
Oh, so it is partly in Woodbury?
No, no, it's just that some of those residents up there go down into Cabot and down through that way because it's quicker form. And then after Tom did the checks today, the checking account had left in at $15,256.66. And then I put in that $49,000. So it should bring it back up to around $65,000.
So, can you catch me up on how Tom? Like what Tom does for the town? I mean, I know he comes and he works in the office, but like.
He's Brandy's assistant.
He's Brandy's assistant.
So he came in today, he did the payroll, and he did whatever bills that we have there that need to be paid.
And he does the bank reconciliations once a month.
Did he do that job before Brandy came?
He was the town clerk, uh, yeah, town treasurer.
Right?
Yeah.
Let I recall that.
Then he went and moved.
So that's basically what I have for tonight.
Alright, thank you, Robin. Mr. Mark Santi, internet technology update. You got your email, which was.
Big sigh. If you guys have any questions, I want to answer them.
Oh gee, I read that email, I don't think I printed it out.
I have one question. This is not about what you put in the email. It's about what I figured out that we don't have after I read your email.
Okay.
Why don't we have fire alarms just in the town office?
Good question.
We have.
So we have smoke alarms, but nothing that's connected to a monitoring system?
Correct.
Like the school, if the school goes off, there's a message that's sent to someplace.
It's sent to a monitoring service.
The town garage. And so does this building.
We have no working fire alarms in this building, only garages, one side.
Right.
That's hopefully gonna be fixed shortly.
Did you hear back from Rusty on that? I know as of when you sent your email, you said you hadn't heard back from MEI, right?
I did, and I have that bad news in front of me. You wanna hear that now, or?
Sure.
So to put the module in this fire alarm here, different monitoring company than the garages. Module alarm is $1,390 bucks, so twice what the garage is gonna cost.
What'd you say, $1,300?
$1,390, I've got the quote here.
And it just has to be a different, different module because?
I thought there was a fire alarm system here.
There is.
It doesn't work anymore, I told them to went to CV fiber.
Oh, so, okay.
And to be able to call out over the fiber network, it needs a different module.
Okay, alright.
And again, that's an oversight on basically everybody's part. Didn't know there was an alarm here, they used the phone lines. And it has to use copper lines, otherwise you gotta put a module in it, same thing with the garage. The garage was about $700 bucks for the module, and this is $1,390.
Otherwise, we would've had to keep a separate phone line, right? So.
Right, with consolidated, yeah.
So in order for this to work, we need to have the module or keep a separate phone line that we pay every month.
Well, if you wouldn't keep a separate phone line, we'd have to get a brand new phone line because the library phone line, which is what it was on, was switched over and is what the library is using right now.
Okay.
Just, you know, it's one of those things that slips through the cracks.
So the school fire alarm is still working because they didn't get another phone line?
That's a completely different alarm system.
Okay.
Okay, than this one. So anyway, one of the things that we need to do tonight is I need you guys to tell me to go ahead and tell, what was the name of the company? I don't have my glasses on.
MEI?
MEI, to go ahead and go over and install that module, and that'll make this work.
What would it take to get the town offices on a system like that?
Somebody would have to decide whether it's needed or why.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna have to, yeah, go out for request bids. And then the question becomes, where in heck would you install it down there?
Get all your other new stuff installed first.
Robin won't let you forget it, and I will.
No, I was just wondering why.
It makes sense to have something similar there. I mean, there's a lot of expensive equipment in there.
Yeah.
The vault is safe supposedly, so.
But, yeah.
Three things we have to do tonight, assuming everybody's in agreement with them. I need to get the contract for RB Technologies signed. That's an electronic signature, so you can just authorize me to sign it. I need to get the contract for the new scanner, copier, printer signed. Again, that's an electronic signature, you guys can authorize me to do it. We should approve the, this quote for MEI, for $1,200 bucks. I went ahead and told the other company for the garage to go ahead and do it, since it's basically repair of the existing equipment, so is this, but since I had this, why don't we bring here? Once we do that, then we can get the ducts in a row, once that contract is signed for RB Technologies. RB Technologies will come in, tell us where to mount the equipment rack, tell me whether I need plywood, and I guess, and I guess we need that. Once we do that, that tells us where those internet cables have to come down out of the basement, and we need to get the sheetrock up on there then, hopefully by the end of October. So.
The sheetrock by the end of October, or the whole thing by the end of October?
The sheetrock needs to be in there probably mid-October, so RB Technologies can mount that rack, so the wiring guy can do the network wiring the end of October, when he's scheduled to come in. Does that make sense?
And the plywood is a go, or you still haven't?
I don't know, I gotta get an answer from RB Technologies, and sometimes getting answers out of them is, you know, less like part, part of them is volunteer. The interesting thing I.
Sorry, I think I volunteered to do that, put plywood up. So if you want to let me know where and when, happy to do it.
Okay.
I also, I did mention it to Mike as part of his go before, since he's gonna be in there anyway. And I believe he's gonna be in there like next week or soon. Have you talked to him yet? I keep saying it to you, but he did tell me he was getting very close to being able to get there. So we would just need to know the location.
Location would be easy, except there's heating vents there that we need to make sure the equipment. I don't know how far away from those vents the equipment has to be.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And that's, that's what they'll tell us.
Yep.
By the way, sort of along the lines, Lizzie pulled the door open in that cabinet behind you.
Oh.
It's empty.
Wow.
Oh.
There used to be a lot of stuff in there, right?
Stole the box behind you, and the school took a whole bunch of stuff out also. So.
You didn't like it last time we saw the inside, how do you feel about it now? Is it?
I feel a lot better about it.
That's good.
You'll fill it up with some toys or something.
Now that's gotta come off the wall, and there's gotta, a rack that's gotta be put on there also.
Oh, okay.
And that's along with RB Technologies stuff. So, Robin, you have checks that have to be signed for all this stuff, right?
Yes, sir. They're not filed right there.
So what is the next step, what do you want me to do here?
Well, I guess it requires a motion from the board to authorize you to sign those two contracts.
And you were gonna talk about price increase since we approved whatever.
The RB Technologies contract went up by $5,000. I explained the reason for that in a note, and that's that when they gave us the preliminary contract, we had a detailed review meeting with them, then went down through it, and there was obviously some stuff that was missing, which is why you had the preliminary review. And then we, and they assumed that the town would buy stuff and have them installed. I said, no, no, that's not the way it's gonna work. You guys are gonna do all the purchasing, you guys are gonna do all the installing, we don't want any surprises. You know, put everything in the, in the contract. So that's why the contract went up from approximately $15,000 to $20,000. And the other thing, and hopefully everybody caught it, was the glowing reviews that came from Callis and.
Yeah, that was interesting.
The other town. And there's one more town that she's supposed to get me, I haven't pushed her on that, but anyway, I've observed very positive.
Give me that thick file.
So Skip, that was a $20,000 roughly contract, and then there were also one-time keys?
$800, something dollars one-time keys, they went up slightly.
Okay.
And that's because of the additional equipment.
Those are the monthly?
Yes.
It's gonna be the monthly.
My hat, you want me to read those numbers, Robin? And Diana?
Um, no, no.
I'd love to hear them if you don't mind. You're talking the cost number, right?
Yeah. Here's one place. So CV fiber is done. You talked about the fire alarm. The networking cabling for the clerk's office is $39.50. I had estimated $4,000, it's $6,000. Since we previously approved that, I told them to go ahead with that. The RB Technologies went from $15,000, $16,000 to $20,800. The monthly charge went from $7,700 to $805. And then the copier. Copier. What steps you can do this? Copier is $6,064 plus $64 a month maintenance. And whether your purchase or lease is $64 a month maintenance. The thing that they will, that this company will do for us is they'll take the old cannon, they'll get it off-site, and they'll store it until it needs to be shipped back in December, located shipping back, estimated shipping back 2,000 to 5,000 bucks. We have to pay the, the remaining lease on the cannon, which again is roughly $60 plus whatever the monthly maintenance is, so it's roughly a break even there. And, Lizzie, does that explain it?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this, uh, let's see, is the copier check supposed to be in here too?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have to keep looking. Regarding, oh, this is for the, for the garage fire alarm module.
Yeah, I have to hand carry that over to that, but I have it with me when they do install.
Okay. So I guess the first one would be RB Technologies. Here's the, I guess I'll make a motion that we approve this total, Masters. Hardware network upgrades, master services agreement, hardware subtotal.
This is $9,000.
But that's the, that's only half of it, right?
That's the hardware portion.
The hardware portion.
The, the rest of that, which is software installation and setup charges, will be built as that even are incurred. Hopefully that'll happen between now and the end of the year.
And that total will be the $20,800?
Right.
Okay.
And then the, and again, this is, this is like dealing with some of my firm jello. Again, I told them to throw everything in there that they think that we could run into. And she said, if we don't need stuff, it'll be, will be built.
Okay.
So yeah, this does say hardware subtotal $9,878, and network upgrades prerequisites to managed services subtotal $10,850. For a total of $20,850.
And do you want to conclude in your motion, Diana, that you authorize Skip to sign?
Yeah, yeah, we authorize Skip to sign the, this contract, and we give him this check. I wish we had a copy of the check, though.
Any discussion? Kinda already had a discussion.
Can you stop by the office in the morning and pick it up?
What?
The check.
I don't need that check, that check gets mailed.
Oh, okay, so I can make a copy of it?
You can make a copy of it, and you can email that to me, and I'll email it to them.
Oh, okay, so this doesn't have to be, okay.
Alright, hearing no more discussion.
So this, like, this doesn't need an electronic signature?
No.
The other ones?
The contract needs an electronic signature for RB Technologies. But I have to send a copy of the check and electronically sign the contract.
So maybe the important thing is that motion is to approve, to authorize Skip to approve, sign the contract with RB Technologies. Then the check goes out as a matter of fact that we signed the contract.
Okay.
So. Would you like to amend that motion?
Okay, I'll amend that motion. Let's see, that's we authorize Skip to sign the contract for RB Technologies, and we also authorize issuance of the check for $9,878 for hardware.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This says give Skip, give check to Skip. Oh, that's the other one. Okay, so the next one is, so we'll just.
That'll go into the, do you want that separate or in the pile?
No, we need it right in the pile.
This one is to authorize a payment of $643.12 to Seco Security, Inc., for the installation and equipment for the.
Installation of the wire module for the garage.
Clerks, oh, oh, okay. For the module to upgrade the alarm system for the town garage.
Do we actually need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe not.
We'll do it, though. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor of sending a check for the installation of the fire maintenance?
Fire alarm module.
Fire alarm module for the town garage, please say aye.
Aye.
That check I need.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And there's a third one, correct?
Third one is the, so the copier.
Copier. But we don't need to approve, you don't need a check for this building, the $1,200? Or do you need the, the fire alarm?
No, just tell me, authorize me to go ahead and tell them the order of the module for the library.
Did you agree that we should?
Do we need a motion for that one?
What's that?
Do we need a motion for that one too?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's under, it doesn't have to go up on RP, and it's under maintenance, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So do you need a motion for the copier, though, Skip?
I need to, you guys need to authorize me to sign the contract for the copier.
Thank you.
You want me to?
I'm.
Sure. I'll make a motion to authorize Skip to sign for the copier, which will be a, be $6,064, and then after that, $64 a month for maintenance.
At the bottom of that, what I can take right now.
Wait, I can't find that. In this pile.
The copier check?
Yeah.
Then we can make a copy of this.
It's a copier check.
I didn't look through them, I was just taking it for granted that it was.
Can you tell me the name of the copier company?
There's a KEO Sarah copier, and copier company.
AY, OH, Sarah, KEO, AY something.
Office Systems of Vermont. Office Systems of Vermont, or Visual Edge IT.
Yeah, I don't think that the check got cut for that. At least it's not in the readout. Copier lease cannon, no?
No, that's on the charge for the one you've got already.
When do you need the check, Mike?
I have to have it shipped. I was supposed to send them a copy of the check in an email, but I'll tell them that it was authorized, but unfortunately, the check wasn't cut. So we have to wait the two-week cycle from that now, right?
No.
No, not if it's authorized, I think that.
No.
Okay, so Brandy can fax, you can do it.
Yeah.
See it in the register. Sorry about that, Skip.
Right, look at them.
Okay, so we are gonna authorize you to sign the contract for the copier. I mean, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Skip to sign the contract for the copier, and to give them the check as soon as it's mailed, or keep it, give them a copy. I'm glad you're writing all this, Michael.
No more discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's a dinosaur flipper over there.
Thanks. Cool.
I have one more question. Is what kind of updates you work on progress with this, or is email updates sufficient?
Email's good for me.
That's fine.
Email?
We want to have you come to meetings.
Yeah, I don't wanna take a diagonal, it's like for the time.
Heavens.
Leave it up to you.
Yeah, it'd be good to have updates.
Want some more?
Yeah.
Probably should be going faster soon, right?
Don't roll your eyes at email. I will update as necessary, how's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whenever there's news, interesting news.
Thanks, Skip.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else before we move on? Thanks for all your work.
You're welcome.
Yeah, oh my God, he's volunteered over the last, what, five or six years?
Five or six years?
More?
2010, 2011, around.
Oh my goodness, yeah, okay.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Huh?
Time flies when you're having fun. Alright.
Yeah, amazing.
Next item on the agenda is the Bailey Bridge Road status. And we have Alex Pelts, and I apologize if I forget your name. Jim, here to speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. I think we've spoken with many of you about it, or at least raised it. It's Bailey Bridge Road on the Class 4 side is in pretty rough repair.
First, I'm gonna say, you need to show some evidence that it's a Class 4.
Okay. Wait, is it Class 3? We didn't know it?
It's not, I don't, well, Robin and I looked for some maps, and we can't find where that was ever a town road, it's a camp road.
Hmm, interesting.
But, did you bring those maps?
I did. I thought Alex would like to see those.
Yeah, not much as I would.
Yeah, they're, I made a photocopy, I'm gonna paste them together. Yep.
From a couple of surveys that were done.
See, this one here is survey 141, if you are gonna need to come in and look at the.
Ah, interesting.
Yep.
So it being a camp road, then the town has just no interest in it and no authority over it, I guess, right?
If that's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you're free to look for other, you know, we've been going through this on some other roads recently.
Well, that's helpful. Well, yeah, I guess I would like to take a look at these, so this is on file, I'm gonna take a picture of that.
You can have these, Alex.
Oh, wait, you can keep?
Yeah, you can have those.
Great. Thank you. Hey, Jim, you wanna keep them?
Oh, I sure do.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're starting to do some work on that road, it's pretty banged up. I thought it might be in the town's holdings, and therefore wondering what, how we could share some of those responsibilities to keep it upgraded, especially since.
Well, it's, my situation is that I'm at the very end of Bailey Bridge, where it splits right into Greenwood, or left at Doc Con. And if you continue up the hill, you go to the Sprague property, which is on Greenwood.
Sprague property?
S-P-R-A-G-U-E, Sprague, with Ethan Chelsea.
Owner of the name, that's the name of the owner?
That's the name, yeah, Keith and Chelsea Sprague, they live not there, they live somewhere in Hookfield.
So this is beyond the, beyond the park that's currently planned?
By Schilling, right. Schilling is at 640. And then the road just goes. But I've been in there cleaning up a lot of the brush, and what I discovered was, for a road that's not even a Class 4, it's got drainage ditches on both sides that would be similar to that, which is in the Class 3 suction, for this non-existent class four. And there's also culverts. I discovered three culverts that were put in by somebody sometime. And I've owned the property since eighty-nine and I've always used that road to go down. And when I first bought the property, it seemed to me that the road before your dad and some of the other property owners up there, it was kinda like the same kinda condition. So it seems like somewhere over the years, the property itself kinda, not the property, but the road itself took kinda turn, I don't know.
Did you, did you ever hear the story of the big development that was gonna go on there?
Oh, yeah, I bought that property from Joseph Whitcomb.
Okay, so he's the one who built, who built a nice, really nice road way back. Yeah, he built that road. And that's why it was, when the other section was upgraded to class three, it was already, you know, wide enough and, you know.
Well, he, he must have put that road all the way down to our property and the Pluse property, which was the owners of the camp before Debbie Goslin and Dennis Galant bought it. And I bought the property from Debbie and Dennis in two thousand twenty-two with the intention of upgrading it. And so we've taken the camp down, using the same footprint and the purpose two-story on it. And I'm hoping to be living in it at the end of two thousand twenty-five.
Oh.
And there's a possibility, a very strong possibility, I was over with Steve Boltick, who's another property owner on the lake.
He's on the, he gets in from the other side, right?
He comes in from County Road, the Pepper Drive.
Yeah.
And I've got access now to power off of his property, so I can actually power it without having to bring the poles all the way down to the end of the street and then down the additional three hundred yards to the camp. So, yeah, I've been doing a lot of work and I'm getting quotes to upgrade the road to a level of three, whatever that potentially could be. I don't know what, how the, well, how the town looks at it. If I was to bring it up, would the town adopt it, or would I be on the others?
Mommy, yeah?
Go ahead.
Tell me what I know about this.
I'll take two, anyway, okay.
I mean, we, the only time we upgrade a road from class four to class three is when there are several homes, year-round homes there. That's why we upgraded the section of.
Up to six forty.
Of, up to, right, right, from, this, this state map shows point two-two miles of Town Highway twenty as a class three and then point zero eight miles, class, or class four. And that's, and it doesn't show the part that was upgraded a few years ago to go all the way up to Schilling.
Yeah.
But to, to upgrade beyond that, you'd have to have, you'd have to have it surveyed, you'd have to bring it up to either class three or class four state standards. And then, I don't know if we, I mean, that's a long, could be a long road if have to plow in the winter. That's, I mean, for one or, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's actually three point six tenths of a mile to the bottom.
Three point?
Six.
Three point six?
Tense, a mile to get to the bottom from where it's, it's already a class three at Schilling's.
Not talking three miles, you're talking point three six?
Less than four tenths of a mile.
Right, less than a half mile, three tenths of a mile, three point six, just like four tenths, which would be about a quarter of a mile. From where it, it already is improved with the power lines that end at Schilling's and the Pelts property.
Yeah.
And then the next three point six tenths of a mile is unimproved, which is what I'm, I'm starting to work on. I've already been in there and I unfortunately dumped a lot of, a lot of gravel on it and in July the storm, it's gone. I couldn't believe it, I mean, it was all down the bottom and over the sides and it's like, you gotta be kidding me. So I did talk to Mr. Larrabee, who I went on your website, he's the board foreman. And so I figured, I gotta learn what's going on here. What can I do to make it ready to move into in another year? That's what I kind of hope to do. See, the other problem I've got right now is that I'm even having a hard time getting tradesmen to go down there to continue the work on it because the road got washed out at the bottom. So I already tried a Band-Aid, the Band-Aid washed out and it looks like I'm gonna need to put another Band-Aid on it, which is what I'm working towards.
Well, yeah, I checked it out too and I was, I was kinda scared by the time I turned around. It felt like I had already gone two miles, but I don't think.
You've been out there.
In my Subaru.
That's what I drive, so, yeah, we're in good shape.
So, yeah, but then by the time I got to a place where I could turn around, there was kind of a little hole in the bushes that I didn't keep going because it was scary. I'm not very brave.
Believe it or not, last year, a cement truck poured a foundation at our place and he drove it all the way down. I don't know why he did. I had, I had to open up the road and clear, give clearance above the top, the canopy, but he, guys up here got big ones, drive that big truck down there and then up our driveway, it's like, oh my Lord. So, but I'm having a hard time getting tradesmen to just, you know, continue to come in and just keep the place going. So, and I know we're getting into the winter season real soon. And I've talked to my neighbors and they all wanna see, you know, up, up on it.
Do you have other neighbors that are building out there, or what?
Uh, yeah, Sprague's already put something up there, but it's a, more of a camp, it's gonna be, you know, seasonal because they live in another town.
Sprague's, uh, Walter would like to build something down there.
Pardon me?
Sprague's.
Okay, yeah, they own a lot of land down there, more than I realized. That, and that surprised me, but I, I certainly had an interest in being.
Where's that log cabin, that log house that burned?
Well, that was Hides, right? Was that the Hides?
Hides.
Right.
Hyde.
Hyde, is it Hides or Hyde?
No.
Hyde and a Hyde.
Hides are the people, Aaron and Bailey were on the point of my property. And then the Hides, H Y D E S, they're from New Jersey, the Jersey Shore, and they, they've got the cabin. I think that was, he told me that that was when it burned. And they rebuilt it.
Yeah, they're not at the bottom, their, their term goes, is further up the road.
It's like only one point two tenths down the road. That's where that loop driveway goes and then that's to your mom's property too, right, on that other side?
Yep, yep.
So maybe I didn't even get that far.
Oh, you coward in the Subaru. My goodness, I know.
I know, I don't know by myself.
But anyway, I, I am looking at doing, I'm doing some work, I've already done a lot of work, I'm doing some more work. And I'll be looking at a, a general contractor. Ditches gotta be improved, they already exist, but they've got saplings that are like four inches diameter, thirty feet high. And I've been cutting them and chipping them and getting that process going. Plus the gravel that I, I donated to the Mr. St. Germain around the corner from my, where all ended up in his driveway. So, but it's a project that's in, in the goes, what's happening, and we continue to work on it and.
So have you talked with contractors about what it might cost to upgrade it yourself?
Um, probably somewhere between ten, fifteen thousand for, for, you know, maybe a couple culverts in the, a couple ditches along both sides, which I, I'm taking the trees off. For whoever I hire, I'm gonna have all of that prep work done. So that, that takes the burden off of them. And, but they need, they need water bars and they need, I got two culverts that are completely filled in and you hired who, Mark Dasselder?
Chuck.
Chuck, Chuck. And he went in and he found another, uh,
Right.
culvert and he opened that up. And I, I don't know what the results of this would work or not, but he started at the very top, just beyond Schilling's, probably for about a hundred yards. And he's, he's opened up some of the drainage there, but that's, that's good. But it's not gonna take care of the other, you know, three tenths of a mile.
Are the other, are there other landowners who wanna share the cost with you?
Um, yes, I've reached out to them and everyone said yes, but I gotta figure out a formula. If you only live at one tenth of the mile down, what's your share of every bill is versus the Sprague's and me, who are at the very bitter end? And then the Hides is who don't own anything but seventy-five yards on this spill land. And they have a right of way to my property, we live on our park, on our property, that you go down to their point and, and they have a little, you know, campsite.
And there could be people, I mean, that basically was a camp road, there could be people who have a camp who don't care about year-round access.
Oh, St. Germain, the one that is on the right where all my gravel ended up, he's out of chickrey mast and that's where I grew up.
Ron died.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, I don't know who took the property over from him.
Oh, yeah, no, no, the records, they didn't reflect that, I just went on, where do you call it, Vermont?
Parcelled view.
Parcelled view, yeah. And that's where I got his name, so I guess I shouldn't send him a letter.
You can try to, yeah, just see what happens.
Yeah, but I mean, other than that, I had talked to the Hides, I talked to Alex, and, and everyone said, yeah, we'll chip in.
But they don't know how much yet.
Well, yeah, I have to figure that out. And I'm, I'm not an mathematician by any stretch or an engineer. So it's like, you know, I mean, how much of this am I gonna eat? And I might eat a big chunk of it.
And then, then the maintenance, yearly maintenance, yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, you're free to ask the town, but we don't have a strict written policy, but all I can do is say is what we've done in the past has been to only upgrade to class three when there's more than one or two residences involved. I mean, when we, when, I think this old, this map, I think probably went as far as maybe George Larrabee's place, just past Peterborough driveway. And since then, there's been what, four more houses built, there's.
Yeah, I mean, four houses, yeah, up on, permanent up the, up on the hill there, right.
And they're all year-round.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, so it's.
It's only three wills, is that what you're saying?
We're talking about the top of Bailey Bridge Road, which, which previously was not even class three.
Okay.
They didn't, you know, plow it all the way up.
Yep.
Um, but once people start moving up there, yeah. Um, so it sounds like, do the upgrades to the road kinda come back and see where we're at, maybe, and have a conversation at that point?
Well, I think.
Yeah, you have to upgrade it anyways, if you wanna build it, kinda, that's what's gotta happen.
I mean, if you're thinking about trying to get the town to upgrade it and take over maintenance at some point, then there's a lot more to do. Yeah, and I can't say that there's much hope that we would do that, but.
Wouldn't there be a process for that, saying that's like, if we were gonna throw up a class four, there's gotta be a process to add a class.
There is, yeah, you gotta get the state to, you know, get a design, get it designed and surveyed and get the state to look at it and approve it and.
Right.
There's a whole legal procedure for the town too.
Right, yeah.
To make it into a class four.
So the, if I may, so to understand the process, I would have to see some kind of a permit from the state of Vermont? And the town would agree to do anything to this camp road?
No, no, you can repair it as a private road.
Okay.
You can do what you want.
If you wanna, if you wanna upgrade it to a class four or three, that's when the state gets involved. Because the state gives the town state aid and they wanna know that their road that they're paying for is built correctly. So I think that's where the state comes involved.
Okay, so it would be after I hire somebody to get started, or should I already have the information ahead of time?
If you wanna, really wanna pursue this.
Yeah, I don't have a choice.
I mean, no, I mean, if you really wanna pursue the fact that the town might take it over someday, then you need to start with a surveyor and an engineer. But I, like I said, I can't hold out much hope that that'll ever happen. We've got a lot of camp roads in town and they're all private. And I can remember one case where Jerry Diamond, I don't know if he used to be the attorney general, was over on Dog Pond and he convinced the board at one time to take over a little piece of that road, but it was all flat, it wasn't a big deal. But other than that, I don't know. Yes?
Just.
Go ahead, Skip.
Just as a point of reference, at Greenwood Lake, there's a whole bunch of private roads around there. And some of them have lawyer-round homes, some of them have lawyer-rounds homes, camps, some of them are just camps. Those people on those roads all get together and have agreements where they do the maintenance and upgrading of the road themselves. And that's probably the way you should proceed.
Liz is trying to get, she's trying to get a word in.
So I don't have experience with dealing with upgrading roads at all, but just kinda my own personal feelings are, I would really hate to see you dumping in money to surveying it for that purpose if that wasn't how it was gonna end up. And, um, you know, I'm certainly open to discussing it at any time, but my, my immediate feelings on it are that it wouldn't really be fair to the taxpayers to make it a town road, which, you know, increases the cost to the whole town unless there's a significant benefit to the entire town. So that's just kinda like my initial reaction to the idea, I'm just throwing it out ahead of time.
I, I have something to add too, and Alfie can let me know if I make a mistake on this, but if you wanna upgrade it to a class four road, there are state standards for what that is and you would have to upgrade it so that they meet those state standards. And then the town would have to go through the legal procedure to make, designate that as a town class four road.
But that, but that wouldn't even get them any winter plowing.
No, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't give you winter plowing if there are culverts on the road and the town, if it does designate it as a class four road, then the town is responsible for the maintenance of those culverts and the roads that goes over it or through it.
I know.
And then with class three, there's more town responsibility for the maintenance, maintenance of it. So, and there are higher standards for what a class three road is. So each step up is a little bit more of a commitment from the town to maintaining the road.
I don't even know if the state has a class four. I know they have a class three, it's like, if.
I know, I've heard of a class four upgrading to a class three.
Yeah.
I've never heard of a private turning.
Right, no, I haven't either.
I was always under the assumption you had to upgrade it to a class three in order for the town to take it over.
Yeah, you would, yeah. Yeah, so upgrading to a class four really.
Well, that's what happens with the road down at Nichols Dam, I mean, remember the debate we had on whether it was a class four road or a private road? And we've established that it's a class four road.
Right.
And so that is town property. What the class four road or trail designation is, is the town is saying that this road is town property. It may be going over somebody's property.
Right.
That's, that's a part of the whole, you know, kind of the legalese of the different classifications.
Yeah, but the Nichols Dam road is still a class four.
Yes.
We don't maintain it in the winter.
No.
We only do a little bit of maintenance, maybe.
We don't do much maintenance at all. Unfortunately, there are no culverts on it.
Yeah, cause, right, at, at this point, I know, because when we were putting in sliding doors in April, we had to camp after a snowstorm. There was like a four-foot pile of snow and we couldn't get down the road. So we had to huff it another three-quarters of a mile by foot and drag them down.
Oh, I thought that was awful.
It was awful, yeah. There we go.
Adventure.
I can tell you, it was good exercise though. Also, I, I, I talked to Mark Sassen today, he showed me the road that was recently upgraded, that's a class four. It goes down to fourteen, it's an extension off of County Road.
It's always, always been a class four.
Yeah, he said it's a.
It was only repaired, it wasn't upgraded.
Massive work though, holy moly.
Yeah, well, it was gone. It was gone, after last year's flood.
Yeah, no, I, I looked at that, I go, holy moly, you know, but I gotta keep the progress going because I got too much invested. I got nineteen acres and six tenths of an acre with a camp on it and I gotta just try to bring it up, you know, to be able to get to it, you know, that's the key. So I'll, I'll do the front end, I'll, I'll be working on the front end, but I'd probably come back and speak to you when I get some more work done and see where it's at.
I agree with, with Lizzie that we don't wanna lead you to spend a lot of work in engineering and, and surveying and legal fees if there's really not much chance that we'll ever upgrade it, so that's.
Well, that's a true thing. Yeah, it's interesting. I, I assumed it was a class four, but knowing, knowing it's a, it's just a camp road, I mean, that sort of changes the nature of things, I think, in a big way, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cause obviously he did some good work when it first was done.
Yeah.
It does have the culverts, it did have water bars and it's got ditches on both sides. But over the years, it's now filled in with saplings and so.
What does it show on your deed? Does it show it as like a shared right of way or, you know, like your property description? Does it describe the road and what the road is?
You mean, in, in the town records I looked at today?
Like your, yeah, like your own property description, does it say like your property is, you know, bisected or whatever?
You have a legal right to go over that camp road to get down to your property.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
But you don't. I don't know if you want it.
Yeah, if you don't have it, that's an issue because. Yeah, if you don't have it, that's an issue, because people could stuff you for it.
If somebody was gonna develop it, he would've had to put all that together for each lot. And so if somebody put that kind of money into that road, he would've made sure that each lot had rights to that.
Yeah, probably.
So I would check, I would check with your deeds, look at your deeds and see what it, what it's.
Yeah, I looked at the books today, and it's voluminous, the amount of information, not from just my camp. From when I bought the land, I didn't have a camp. And I was looking at pluces, and then I was looking at drapers, and I was looking at, I mean, just on and on and on and on, going back over since the sixties. So I don't know where it, you know.
Wow.
It had to be that Everdale Ridge who put that in, I mean, there's definitely ones with the capital for that.
Well, it might've gone, I mean, there might've been some kind of a more primitive road that went all the way down to the lake shores on either side, but he definitely upgraded it a lot.
Somebody did, yeah, yeah.
We can look in the folder for Everdale at the office too.
We have, yeah.
Permian River?
The, is it Everdale?
Everdale Ridge, yeah.
Yeah, we have a folder on them at the office, we can look through there and see what's in that.
Okay.
I think there's the old act of fifty application and all these things that went with it at the time, and he had big plans, it was gonna be a marina, you could go from one lake to the other, and fortunately, that never happened.
Iron Sky. Alright, then, I'm gonna wanna look at that, run, think of that information, if you're gonna trip up.
I'm gonna make a recommendation that possibly we move on to the next item. Thank you for coming, and appreciate it.
No, I gotta go back to Connecticut.
Alright, you can go.
I got four hours ahead of me.
Late morning.
I'm interested about this Woodbury Hardwick rail trail, so I'm gonna stop you off for that.
Right.
So our next agenda item is website maintenance. I assume that has referred to Skip Lindsey's decision to step back from that. And John Reed, I found out, is at least wants Skip's recommendation in the short term, gonna do some of that.
Yeah, he has, yeah, and he has agreed to do that, and Skip, I got the impression he didn't wanna do it anymore.
Right.
Not just when he's on away for a couple of weeks, but.
I get the same impression.
So I asked John, you know, to fill in, cause I know he's done it before, and of course, he agreed, and I don't know how long-term he agreed for, but we'll see how it goes. I might like to learn, learn it myself, I don't know how.
Didn't you mention something about it, Alex?
I was just curious, I, I mean.
So you would be another possible victim.
Yeah. I'm curious where the website, I mean, I know I'm getting into the conversation late here, but where.
You're not late.
Okay. I'm curious if there's been any conversation about, you know, upgrading the site. I know it was donated by a gentleman in town, right?
We did, we hired him.
You hired him, okay.
Ben Witt, W-I-T-T-E, and he, he still is our webmaster, and he, I, you know, I, I think the, I don't really like using it.
Yeah.
I don't like all the categories, and they don't make a lot of sense to me, some of them, I've never asked him to do anything other than, you know, posting and changing a few things here and there, but.
Yeah, what's the, do you, do either of you know, or any of you know off the top of your head, like what the maintenance is for the site?
It's, I don't know, is it five hundred dollars a year or something? It's not, it's not very much.
Yeah.
Very much.
That rings a bell in my select board member.
What?
Five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't remember how we, how much we did pay to begin with, but he did live in Woodbury, and it wasn't.
Alex, you have experience maintaining websites.
Yeah, a little bit, I mean, it's part of my, it's part of my work, and I'm familiar with a lot of the different, not in regard to sort of municipal websites, but, I mean, I think, it feels like it's worthwhile, and I know that it's, you know, what you've done with Skip, it's like you've already gone through a big sort of technology update, but it feels like the website is a place that people are referencing more and more, and it feels like it's something that in the coming years might need a little upgrade and an investment to get, what, I would think, some sort of municipally focused software, that would be easy to maintain and have a little bit of backend support, a little bit like probably what the, you know, IT vendors provide.
We got an, we got an email from Ben this week, I think, asking, you know, if we would, you know, just to spread the word that he's doing web design and stuff like that, and I'll send you a copy of that, cause he had some links there that he wanted us to look at, but. Alex made a beautiful website for the Northern Rivers Land Trust.
Yeah, we built a site there, I mean, that was on Squarespace, which is a pretty common, you know, platform. I think that for something like the town, I think it would be interesting to start to research what are the providers out there that again are doing specifically like, you know, for example, the school district just upgraded in the past couple of years to a, you know, a school district-based platform, so it's really tailored to have the functionality that a school district might need, and I'm guessing that there are a lot of these, I think that I looked at other towns in our neighboring towns that have these kind of platforms. So it's basically like a kind of plug and play, you get the design lifted up, and then populating the content and maintaining it is certainly a lift. But I think it would be a lot easier, it feels like it would be worthwhile to start looking into that.
There might be funding, state or federal funding to upgrade a website. I could ask CVRPC if they know of any funding sources, if you'd like.
Please.
Alex, are you bringing this up because you're interested in being involved in the process?
Not really, but.
I'm not agree with anything else.
Yeah, John is a great person, I would be willing to like sort of be part of a, yes, I guess I would be willing to help with that, cause it feels like it should happen. And I've worked with John a little bit, and he's, he's great at this kind of stuff, you know, technology and web development. I don't think that we would be building the site, I'm not suggesting that we do this, I think this is something that should be contracted out. But having a point person would be helpful, I think that John and I were on that would be, yeah.
Trying to think, I think, well, Skip Lindsey was the one who had, who convinced the town that we needed to have a website. Well, I don't know how long ago it was, some while ago. And I don't know if we, I don't think we did a formal bid. I think we decided, I think he looked at several other options, and we decided to go with the local guy.
Yeah. Do you know what the site, when you get into updating, where are you going? What is the software? Does anybody know what that is?
WordPress?
It's WordPress, I think, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty common one, it's a good one, but it's, it's not very user-friendly. It's open source, so there's no real support. You know, it's, it's not proprietary, so you don't get that built-in thing fully you're paying for, it's sort of a, you gotta do it yourself, and that's what Ben's doing. But, you know, as you've experienced, there's a barrier to making it really useful. And I find that, I think, I mean, this is very personally speaking, but I, I, I would like the the site to be more functional and user-friendly, and I think that a lot of people would appreciate that as well.
I've been on it several times, I agree.
Yeah, it's not bad, but it's just, yeah, I think it could be, I think it could be improved.
Yeah.
And most importantly, the, the use of it, the maintenance of it, yeah. So, um. Yeah, I don't know what the next step is from here, but if we, I don't know what formally needs to happen, but if the select board wants to put a committee together, and John and I are on that, I think we could probably start by looking into seeing what some of those vendors might be, and then put together kind of a spec list, and just starting to get some estimates would probably be a good place to start.
Probably be good to, when Skip Lindsey is back, to find out what research he did when we
Yeah.
decided to go the way they did. And, cause I'm sure he looked at some of those sites, those companies that are specifically sending to towns.
Cause that was built ten years ago or something?
I bet it was.
Yeah.
Was, huh, Skip was on the select board?
So we'll put that on maybe for next month's agenda, or next meeting's agenda?
Is he back next meeting? I can't remember how long he's been gone for.
He's back until the eleventh.
Alright, so.
Two.
A month from now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for a month from now.
Okay.
Thanks, Alex.
See, the first meeting might not be until after the eleventh, cause it's, it's the fifth.
I was gonna say, the first will be a week from tomorrow.
Yeah, so.
The fourteenth.
October, yeah, the second, the second Monday in October is the fourteenth.
Yeah, so Skip will be back.
Okay.
Right. Anything else regarding that website maintenance discussion? Moving on, are you, Liz updating us on the Woodbury Hardwick Rail Trail Board organizational meeting?
Sure, I don't really have a lot to say, but we had our first meeting, Robin and Diana were both there. Robin was kind enough to offer to come to the rest of the meetings and take notes, or do the minutes, which, thank you.
Yep.
And we pretty much spent the meeting mostly just kind of organizing and hearing, we got a lot of input from Danny Hale, who has been really involved with the rail trail as a member of BASSA. And we have another meeting coming up on the seventeenth of October, I think. And that is really all I have to report at this point.
Alright.
Was it, what was the date again on the?
Uh, October seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
I think, that's the, that's the date that sticks in my head.
So, I have a question about the Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail. So the work that Woodbury has been doing on the rail trail, is Hardwick contributing to that at all?
It's not on Hardwick.
So, so the fact that the damage happened in Woodbury makes it Woodbury's responsibility?
According to the lease, Woodbury is responsible for it. I mean, Hardwick has a separate lease for their section.
Okay, alright, so it's just our bad luck that it happened in Woodbury.
Can I ask, what, what section that is on Woodbury that, that needed repair? Oh, it's, oh, was that by the kind of Cape Brook or something?
Maybe, did you see those?
No, doesn't go that from Buck Lake to, was almost to the town line.
Buck Lake Road.
Or Buck Lake Road.
Yeah.
And probably a mile and a half.
And that's considered part of the rail trail?
It is a rail trail, it's still a rail trail.
From, from Buck Lake Road down to the?
Not Buck Lake Road, from, well, from Buck Lake Road, you turn almost an immediate left, and you're on the rail trail.
Right.
The rail trail crosses Buck Lake Road.
Yeah.
So the rail trail continues.
It starts up on Cabot Road.
If you drive.
No, I know, I guess I didn't realize that was.
By the way, at the Hardwick sometime, if you drive real slow and look at the hillside on the other side of Cooper Brook, you can't miss the spot.
Yeah.
Huge landslide, it was amazing.
Right.
Last year.
Yeah, just as you turn, start into the S turns.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why it's hard to look.
So Alex, so I think you're probably thinking of the rail trail, like the one that crosses the state for biking and stuff. I don't know that they're related at all, this is the Woodbury Hardwick Rail Trail, which is an old railroad bed.
Right, no, I'm very familiar with it, I guess I'm confused, cause I always thought that was it.
Yeah. Yeah, so same name.
Lamoyle Rail Trail.
Yeah, they're like not actually related.
They're not related at all.
That's owned by the state, Lamoyle Rail Trail is owned by the state, maintained by the state.
Yeah, LVRT, yeah, this is not.
And one of, one of the things that the group talked about was nice, would be nice, so I guess the Hardwick group is, the Hardwick representative is gonna bring a couple more people to the next meeting, but they like to get a connection between the end of our rail trail and Lamoyle Valley Rail Trail.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of enthusiasm and ideas about, you know, the things that could be done, that should be done, and, I don't know.
Interesting.
Thanks, Liz.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions regarding the rail trail? If not, moving on to the road commissioner's report, and then, you weren't here, but I assume that Robin told you that Cabot's gonna close Ludbrook Road?
Yes.
Yeah, just figured to mention it, but, so what's yours?
That will affect probably some of our residents, but not so much as us, that's the road crew. They called me and asked me if I could plow in sand as a trade for the beginning parts of here, just down to where the road's closed, cause otherwise they have to come all the way around to get that short section. So I told them I'm happy to work something out, some sort of trade, they can haul gravel for us, or something will make it fair.
How far do you think it would be?
It was unclear to me as to where they were gonna make a turnaround, but they have to install a turnaround for trucks to turn, and I'm assuming it would be close to the culvert that they're working on. So it's, if I were to guess, it's gonna be under a mile.
Oh.
But I'm not sure.
It's gotta be more than one culvert, right, that they're working on?
No, it's a big one.
It's a big one?
It's one that's washed out every time it rains almost, it washes out, and so they're, they're going full grommet on this one.
Someone took her there to this house?
You just, oh, you just have some.
Oh, it's not bad?
That last year's flood, like the whole basement.
I remember seeing that, I was sure. It's not levelable.
Oh, socks.
And I, the next day, drove down to see if I could get packed that way.
So road crews finished one of the grants on East Hill. That is done, there's two or three culverts we put in, and I didn't measure it, but it's a whole lot of ditching along the side of the road. It's all seeded, stone lined where needed, and that is done, and we've now started the remaining, remainder of a grant from last year, it was on County Road. And hoping to button that up, I wanna say this week, but.
You said it was County Road?
County Road.
Yeah.
But hearing some complaints about grading, I think I should probably put a little time into that. You know, so that takes from manpower from the grant projects.
Does this grant need to be done by the end of the year?
By the end of September.
End of September.
This is, this is crazy.
Yeah, we just gotta get that done.
So now Mike, so now Michael has to do the paperwork?
No, the reports need to be in by the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
The actual work has to be done by, by September, but we got some time for the paperwork. But I will be, I'll have to talk with Michael as to what he need, what he can confirm he desires, what format information that he want that in. So, I, I mean, I would love to just keep on to that grant and get it done. Today, I did a bunch of ditching and discovered there's two culverts that need to be replaced. One of them is just the bottom's rotting right out of it.
This is County Road still?
Yeah, yeah, so that's more than I anticipated, but I think we have to do it. I think, you know, if we wanna call that section of the road done, we have to change those culverts.
Does that fit into that portion of the grant work that you're doing?
Yes.
It does?
Grant will pay for it, yeah.
Yeah, it should get done.
Yeah, it's a large grant, it's like twenty-seven thousand homes.
Yeah, it's a good sized grant, it's also a fairly large area that we're covering.
Yeah.
Some of it was done last year, just before the flood happened last year, so we can still get, we can still get paid for that work.
But this is the last week of the month, so you're kinda have to do that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda have to stay to it, which is.
And we can go grading next week.
But we've got, I mean, we've got two days of rain too, from Wednesday and Thursday, it's supposed to rain.
So those are days when you can do the work on County Road or?
I can continue on the grant, yes.
Okay, so you don't degrade it with the tree, okay, alright.
So, I think that's, it's wise for us to just stay on to that.
For sure.
Good answer, yeah.
And hopefully people will understand about the grades that are lack thereof. But we are trying, we had to get these grants done, or forfeit the money. So it's, there's a fair amount of money coming into the town coffers by doing this grant work.
Good.
As well as building our infrastructure, you know.
And you won't have it on your list for next year.
Well, there'll be plenty more, that's right, these will be checked off for sure. I also need to work on the. I also need to work on the winter sand pile. I've not had a chance to do that. We put a couple of days into it a couple of weeks ago, but we need, that's still hanging over our heads.
So when you said presumably you finished that grant work, and then it sounds like you maybe put somebody on the grader?
Yeah.
The other guys, then?
The other two guys will be hauling sand. Yes. So next week will be grading if the weather's right, and I'll work mine at 7:00.
Yeah.
And then usually, middle of October, I'm starting to put plows on, maintain the trucks, and get things together for the next season. So, yes, lots to do, lots to do.
Hey, that should be a town holiday. Plowz on day.
Plowz on day. Well, unfortunately, it's more than one day, so... Any questions on roads?
Yeah, well, you got that email about the East Hill Road complete.
I read that. I just read one.
I haven't read that email.
Has that, how accurate is that? I mean, that seems unlikely that it hasn't been graded in two years.
It is totally inaccurate.
Okay.
I mean, we spent a lot of time on East Hill, a lot of time.
And Keen Farm?
Keen Farm, last summer, we put a boatload of gravel onto it.
Yeah.
Resurfaced it, and certainly it was graded, and it's been graded. I, I feel badly for this, this guy's child that had an accident. That's awful. But I don't think we can take responsibility for that.
Well, and it sounds like before the end of the year, hopefully, maybe that'll be graded again.
Absolutely. I mean, we want the roads graded before winter.
Yeah.
Because once they freeze, you're not grading them.
Right.
So you kinda live with those potholes the rest of the year, or the rest of the winter. So, yes, we have incentive to grade all roads, absolutely, yeah. I mean, we have been grading when there's time, when time allows and manpower allows. But we just can't get them all, you know.
Can I, can I make a comment and just say that, like, hearing that, and of course, everybody can come and hear that from you in a moment of time like this, but like, hearing that is so helpful to know where the, you know, where the cruise time is going, working on those grants. Obviously, it's in your interest to get the roads graded for plowings. I mean, of course, if you say that. Could that be something that goes out on Front Porch Forum, like, maybe you've done that in the past, and I've missed it, but it feels like that is a, is a helpful thing to hear
Right.
in anticipation of, you know, that stuff coming, because, yeah, people are growing, and whatever, people are just growing.
Yeah, I mean, we do use Front Porch Forum if we're closing a road, changing culverts.
Yeah.
So that we...
I mean, that, and that's a lot, like, have to take on.
It is in the select board.
And I actually think that that...
What's that?
The town report, you know, what Alfie has just said this evening or other, that's, it's in the...
Yeah, I mean, I give a report. I give a report every select board meeting.
But you don't put the select board minutes on the front porch forum?
That's actually, no, we should.
Oh, I thought they were, I guess...
We used to.
They're posted outside of the town office. They're posted on the bulletin board down by the post office, and they're on the website.
And they're on the website.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that, like, from a, at the point when you start to get a certain level of, like, chatter around a particular issue, feels like there's a moment to quell that by just having extra something outside of the minutes. Right, realistically.
Yeah, if the road board had a secretary.
And it's like, okay, we know that the roads are tough. This is, here's the prior, it's almost like that seasonal shift thing.
I will say that I think that that should come from the select board.
Yeah.
Ultimately, our responsibility.
Great.
And I think that's a really good suggestion, Alex.
Yeah.
And I actually think that I've heard that other towns do that to some extent, so it's probably something we should start doing.
I mean, I have to put another thing on your list, but...
No, I totally agree. I think, I think people being, understanding what we go through as a crew, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Because they're just seeing their road's not graded.
Right.
Their road's not graded. Their road's not, you know what I mean? But we're grading somewhere out, so we're working on another, you know? And I try to spread ourselves out. We had somebody in their last meeting complaining about West Woodbury. Now, West Woodbury is through Hardwick to get to it, and it's, you know, it takes a bit. And I'm not gonna sit here and make excuses, but we've had floods. We flooded last year. We flooded this year. We've had, we've done a lot of work just in repairs.
Yeah.
Let alone, you know, regular maintenance.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah. We've had some trucks breaking down. That's, that always throws, throws a pickle into, you know, the mix, and it's just, you gotta hustle around.
Yeah.
You gotta change plans accordingly. And that happens every morning when I show up for work, and I have one guy down, or a guy's called in sick, or one, you know, and so now I have to change plans.
Yeah.
So it's a challenge, and I'm not sitting here making excuses, but I, I appreciate you suggesting that we, you know, put that out to the public, because they, it's important for them to know.
Yeah. I think at the minimum, I think we should have, be posting our minutes to Front Porch Forum. Give a little more engagement, maybe.
Plug for the website. That would be a great kind of thing, like, if we had an ability to put outside of the Front Porch Forum a notice up to just say, here's a quick seasonal update. We're all starting to make our, you know, fall transition. So is the road crew, you know? Like, finishing up summer things, getting ready for blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, but they, that's just another task for somebody to do. If the road crew had a secretary?
Yeah.
Or if the town had an administrative assistant, like a lot of towns do, they could...
Very easy to post the minutes on Front Porch Forum.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about an update of the road.
Minutes.
But I think that that's, again...
Every two weeks.
Even an update would be very simple. I would be happy to do that as the town highway administrative assistant. It would probably take me 20 minutes to type something out, if even that, and post it.
That would be amazing.
Yeah, I do think if you're okay with it, that it should be approved by the board before it goes out.
Okay, well, okay.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
The road crew write it, too. I don't have...
You just have to spend five minutes on the phone with Alfie.
Right. Or if you guys hear a lot of chatter, and you could talk to Alfie about it, and then put together a communication with the...
I'd be happy to work on it with you.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Chris and Michael.
Okay, yeah.
Anything else? Want to move on, or?
I think that's it.
All right.
I put recovery officer report on here, but we don't really have, you know, Skip's not here. He did send us, he did send us a report. Michael, you...
He sent, he sent one to me also.
Snake duck.
So I, do you want me to put some of that into the minutes, or do you want to just say that it wasn't there?
As long as it was submitted to us. We should clip them to the minutes.
Okay. I could clip the whole thing, or I could... It would be just a cut and paste thing.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it would be nice to note that we did receive $90,027.
Okay.
But all this other stuff about which projects are in what stage, and, you know, nobody needs to...
I did consolidate that in the last minute, so I guess Skip gave me a copy of that. So, okay, I'll do what I kinda did last time.
You can, I, you guys may have different opinions, but we can also just attach these documents to the minutes and make a note that you don't, you'd rather not have them out there.
No, I mean, it's not, it's not that I wouldn't rather have them out there. It's just it makes it so much more bulky. This all has to go in the land records forever and ever, and it's...
Skip is very detailed.
He's very detailed, yeah.
Which is great.
These details, these reports that Skip, yeah. Michael manages to get it down to a couple paragraphs, but Skip usually 20 minutes or so, so, I don't need that.
Updates, another business. I'm working with John Reed, hopefully, to get the RFP on the website. And then the question I would have is, to get it published in the newspaper, do we, or the announcement, to get the announcement published in the newspaper, how do I go about that?
I'll give that to Robin.
Okay. I'll connect with you to do that.
Okay.
All right. And the next thing is to prove bills and payroll orders, which we can do, which has already started to happen. We can kinda do the rest of those at the end of the meeting. And then we have, last item is an executive session inviting the road commissioner to the executive session, so we would need a motion to do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we enter an executive session.
For personnel.
Pursuant to 1 VSA Paragraph 313A3, to discuss...
Personnel matters, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Prison relations, appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, blah, blah, blah.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And we are, we'll enter executive session.